All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Forever. 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 Forever.[539.12]
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Public comment. Do we have any public comment cards? None? All right, then we can skip that part. And then regarding consent agenda, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approved consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.7.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next up is our report from the administration.
We will start with 4.1, Innovational Learning Report, and welcome Dr. Moore to the podium.
Good evening. Last Friday, we hosted our Full Day of Professional Learning. That started with an idea that came from Education Reimagine that Dr. Tucker and I have had the opportunity to be a part of this year. We had 75 staff attend externships that day. We had over 700 staff attend learning hubs. We had small groups attend more personalized trips such as our counselors, social workers, and our physical education team. And we had almost 50 sessions in the afternoon that allowed for collaboration across content and grade level teams. Those were led by Curriculum Council and our administrators. I wanted to publicly say thank you to some of our keynote speakers. Rachel Thomas, who is from Coffin, spoke on the importance of Real World Learning K-12. Michelle Frost, who's the founder of Accountable Intelligence, spoke on AI. Jessica Meisenheimer spoke about the importance of connecting with students and making an impact in their lives. Cassidy Jobe, who's co-founder of Summit Future Foundation, focused on inclusion in the workforce and community for all. And then we had four Liberty Public School students who talked about their entrepreneurial work and the skills that they have developed. That was really well received, so it was cool to see middle school and high school students do that. Panorama, wanted to highlight a few things from our winter session. Students in grades three through five, the greatest increase was in school safety. Students in grades six through 12, the greatest increase was in emotional regulation, which was interesting. That's the first time we've seen that. And staff saw a 2% increase in belonging, which was their greatest increase as well. We did iReady over the winter, and we have some great things we want to celebrate there. Almost all schools are in the high-performance, high-growth quadrant for reading, showing both strong achievement and continued progress. Data shows consistent growth across all demographic groups, which is really exciting. So similar levels of growth in reading across all of our groups. Direct correlation to teachers working with students on RSPs and ensuring that we have solid Tier One instruction for all students. Reading growth is trending a little bit higher than mathematics, but mathematics continues to be an area of emphasis and will continue to be an area of emphasis as we go into next year. And then finally, this is CTE Month, and Liberty was asked to showcase our success in Project Lead the Way. We will be hosting, it was supposed to be this Thursday, 50 educators from around the state, but we're going to schedule, reschedule that for next Thursday, and they will visit schools K through 12. So we're excited to share what our teachers are doing with PLTW. That's just a few things. We've had a lot of great events going on. We had Shadow Search Day recently, and I could go on. But also wanted to highlight that there was supposed to be a Ridgeview walkthrough for tomorrow, and we have postponed that, and we will send you a new date. That is all I have, if you have any questions.
I don't have a question, but I just want to, I popped into one of your, what did you call them, hubs?
Hubs, learning hubs.
The learning hubs. On your professional development day, I went to the multi-tiered systems of support and Special Ed Day at Warren Hills and went to the first session. And I think something that's important for our public to know is not only that our teachers are, and our staff are, they're teaching kids, but they're also teaching each other. And I loved seeing our, in my case, a social worker and resource teacher sharing with other teachers about strategies in the classroom. And I think that's really a great way to leverage the talent that we have on our own team, and it was really well received, it looked like to be.
Thank you. I did, actually, it's always nice. We are going to do a survey to get some feedback from everyone who attended, but I received some emails over the weekend from teachers, and I had one, an elementary teacher who had gone to that learning hub and said that the keynote was so impactful to her. She has a student in special education at the high school level, and she just talked about how it just really made an impact on her as a mom, so she appreciated that. But a lot of good comments. And as you said, we had, I think I shared, over 108 presenters, and almost 95% of them were teachers within our, or directors, people that worked within our district.
One thing I really appreciated, because I stopped by Liberty Middle School and kind of jumped from room to room to catch a few things, but the last room that I went in was Dr. Meisenheimer and Christopher Hand, and they were going over the Panorama data. And I was so impressed, and we use Jack as an example, and I was so impressed with, I just, I'm so excited for teachers to have access to that information, and counselors, honestly, and administrators, everybody.
Thank you for attending.
With the amount of days missed and the amount of virtual, is there anything planned when students return to help bring them back in, I guess, transition-wise? Or, I mean, it's hard to say that it's one-to-one.
Yeah.
Especially when they, it's extended durations. I'm just wondering if there's anything that is planned for that day?
Whenever that comes.
Whenever that comes.
Whenever second.
Sometimes March. No, we talk with principals about that and sending the message of remembering that not everyone has that support at home. We were just talking about fractions over here and like just trying to help, you know, our kids with their homework and knowing that maybe that they don't have the best teachers always at home to help them. And so how do, when they go back to, can we reassure them and then get them all back on track? So it's kind of that gradual release of responsibility. You kind of have to go back to like not assuming that you got it, but let's go back to me showing you some examples. Let's work through these to make sure that we're more together. I mean, that's very simplistic, but I think it's important. Yeah, we're going to have to go back and say, okay, this is what we've been doing over the last week. How are we feeling? Where are we to make sure that we didn't lose anybody?
You have to re-acclimate everyone, I think, do that to some extent. It's probably more of a challenge with our younger grades having had that longer span of separation, which is true when we go to winter break and then come back, or spring break and then come back. So I think our staff do a good job at that, but just to your point, reiterating that. So I appreciate that question.
Yeah, because we're what, two weeks away from about midpoint?
Pretty close, that's right.
And so here's a week that is going to be kind of caught up and thrust into
Yes.
two and a half or something, so that you can get to that point where you can assess where you're at midterm-wise.
We do have the flexibility of adjusting within that assessment window and pushing that as deep as we possibly can.
Back a little bit.
While still trying to adhere to Desi's guidance and requirements. So we'll make all those adjustments as needed.
Yeah, absolutely. We've pushed back the last couple of years. We've kind of inched it back a little bit more each time, so we'll continue to look at that.
Other questions of Dr. Moore? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up then, item 4.2, and that is Student Equity and Access. Welcome Dr. Dixon Sehorn to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. I just have a few things to highlight from the Department of Student Equity and Access report. The first in reference to family engagement and our strategic efforts there. We do now have a sixth learning module that's been added to the platform around fine arts, educational programming, and opportunities. And so that can be accessed on our district's website. It is listed there in the report. Also, with respect to student services, as you know, we opened up the enrollment window for our kindergarten students, for their families to get them fully registered. And so as of February the 13th, we had approximately 141 fully registered kindergarten students and about 27 additional in the queue, just in pending status. So those numbers have likely already changed even since then, and so we'll continue to give you a monthly update on that as we monitor those enrollment numbers. Also wanted to share, I think we had mentioned this the last time we were together, because there was Part One of this series, but we're now gearing up for the second of a three-part Conscious Discipline Parent Series, and that will take place on Tuesday, February the 25th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And it's designed primarily for pre-K through elementary students in terms of the families of those students. So just wanted to kind of add that additional information there. Also, we haven't mentioned this in a while, but Hope Squad. We now have 52 confirmed student leaders. They were selected, recommended, if you will, by their peers. There was a parent meeting that was held in January. Those parents have given their consent, and so we have about 52 students that are going to be a part of this initial endeavor, if you will. And so now our school teams are launching their initial meetings to kind of train the students, and we're very, very excited about peer-to-peer mental health support, and that's what this is about. We also very grateful to Beacon Mental Health for their sponsorship of two of our Hope Squad advisors that will be able to attend the Hope Squad Conference coming up in June in Frisco, Texas. Also, have a couple of save the dates for you. The Seal of Biliteracy Award Ceremony will take place on Thursday, May the 1st, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM at Liberty High School Performing Arts Center. Also, our English Language Department will also host a spring ice cream social on Wednesday, May the 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Mid-Continent Library, the Whitney Library Center. And then with respect to our Special Services Department, they also will have an upcoming event, another save the date for you, Northland Job Olympics. I'm very excited about attending that event as hosted by our district. That will be held on Friday, April the 11th, at Pleasant Valley Baptist Sharp. So those are some of the highlights that I thought I would share with you this evening. We'll gladly take any questions if you have them.
The Hope Squad, I'm really excited about that, and those 52 leaders. I thought back to my own childhood, being in the fifth grade at Ridgeview, and I remember it was the Cold War regarding Russia versus United States or vice versa. And no, at the fifth grade, no one was asking me how I felt about it. I didn't have any say in it. And I do remember gathering with four of my peers outside, us developing a strategy, and it made a difference with those peers. And I think in mental health, the group strength is important. The group can bring strength and encouragement when, group of your peers, when nobody's taking you into account, or very few are taking you into account. So I think this is very important, especially in the chaotic times we're in right now, that something like this is crucial, and that if something's going on with an individual, maybe somehow somebody will learn about this sooner than later, if that does occur. So I'm very hopeful about this program. I look forward to seeing it, and in hopes that somehow I can come and observe how it works.
Thank you for that feedback. And one of the things that I had mentioned to Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer and even to Dr. Moore at one point was that we could potentially be looking at our future counselor and social worker workforce here. By these experiences that these learners will have. And I'd even mentioned to Dr. Moore at some point, it'd be nice if they can maybe earn a badge of some kind in this area, because that's a very significant role that they're playing as they're providing that support to their peers, especially in a very heavy area of mental health support and wellness.
So do you think I might have been a future social worker in that, thinking about that?
You know, I think you can be anything you want to be.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question about the training on that. Does Beacon do that training?
Yes.
Or is that within the building?
They have a formal training program. I actually have had an opportunity to sit in on one of those, and so they have modules that the leaders would walk the students through. So it's very focused and structured.
And those students also went through like an interview process of sorts, didn't they?
Absolutely. They were selected, recommended by their peers, and then there was an opportunity for them to kind of share insights on why they wanted to be a part of this, and then also the opportunity for parents to learn more about it and then give their consent.
Okay.
Yes.
One more question. On the first, first year of the series on Conscious Discipline, do you have any idea what kind of attendance you had at that? And then I didn't go, I don't know.
I think I saw the numbers in a weekly update that Dr. Meisenheimer provided, and I don't know the number right off the top, but I can.
Turnout, like if enough people knew about it?
Somehow, the number 15 or 16 is kind of registering, but to be more exact, I can give you that information.
Other questions of Dr. Dixon Sehorn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is 4.3, and that is our Finance Report with Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have our typical quarterly recognition of donation of supplies valued at $3,247.48 from Office Depot Office Max to the benefit of the students and staff at Manor Hill Elementary.
Do they explain that number? I mean, how did they come to that?
It's based on people that shop there, identify that they're with Liberty School District.
Do you want to donate an extra dollar to?
Yeah, yeah. It's an awesome program. We are reaping the benefits, and we appreciate that very much, and so happy that I can do that every quarter. So that's the only donation I have tonight for you. Tax collections are recurring at the same pace, pretty typical as of last year, so we're getting those in a timely manner, so I'm happy to see that they're coming in and we're getting what we expected. Audit and Finance Committee did review the documents, and it's always nice when I have a new member that they ask questions while they're trying to figure things out. So nothing really to pass on to you, but I always enjoy entertaining the things that they just don't know and they're trying to find out. So he's digging in, and I just enjoy being able to answer and give feedback and know that they're spending some time in that, in those documents. So nothing to pass on to you there. And my last item is next month, we begin to look at next year's budget with a revenue presentation, so here we go. What I have for you tonight.
How exciting to know that's coming up. It's like a preview of coming attractions.
I just can't wait.
Questions of Ms. Sullivan?
May not have updated information, but do we have any more information from the county on the senior system property tax?
No, I could not get ahold of anyone at the county today.
They took the day off, too.
Rhodes?
Rhodes.
I knew.
Yeah.
The revenue collection percentages for operating revenue is lower than the same period last year. Is there some explanation for that?
Yes, because the timing of the largest, the second-largest property tax payment, the county had an issue with the bank. Bank didn't release their funds, so instead of receiving it in January, as we have in the past, we received it in February. So you should see that flip and ride itself next month.
The next month's numbers are going to look really good.
They should look normal.
Until last year.
They should look normal.
Definitely looks better.
And you've mentioned that our federal funds, we've received all of our grants for the year, so we're not waiting on any impending money from federal sources at this time.
That is correct. Since the federal programs, IDEA, Perkins, all of that type of federal funding is funded forward, means that that money's already been allocated, the state has access to that, so we should receive all of that for this fiscal year because it's from their last fiscal year. So we have not had any withholdings. Thank you.
As you, I guess, follow on that, though, as you start projecting revenue for the next year, are there any of those that give you concern, whether they will be there?
I would think they all give us concern at this point.
All right.
State, federal, and local.
Yeah, yes. Well, I don't have any for sure to play out on that. I don't really have a lot of competence either, so more, you know, and that's the thing about next month, and we talk about revenue. It's going to be an unclear picture, as it always is in March, but once we get to May, hopefully with the revised presentation that we'll give you, we'll have much better information with which to update you on all of that. And as always, we're watching all of the legislative bills that are out there affecting school districts, so with 49 days left in the session, there's a lot of time for a lot of things to happen, so.
Other questions of Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.4 then, our Operations Report, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. First, to be clear, on behalf of operations, we do not like to have school canceled, right? So we just want to make that real clear. However, I was notified today from our Health Services Department that we had this perfect storm of RSV, norovirus, COVID, and flu, and so this transmission break, they said, is really of value to kind of let some of those things kind of work their way through everybody, well, at least at home. So anyway, hopefully when we come back here very soon, we're a healthier group.
Now that you mention it, I don't remember any of the others saying that they didn't want to miss. Absent from everyone else's.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. I was wondering if you could repeat the good part of Dallas when he gets back here? I will, I will. I tell everybody he makes the decision.
Thank you.
So you're providing us with the silver lining?
It is the silver lining, right. And in this case, I think they, like, this is probably the worst it's been in many, many years, so of all four coming together. So anyway, did want to note that. Also wanted to thank the Kids' Own Team, as you all know, have been out, whenever we are out, they are in, and really appreciate a month or so ago, you all took action to kind of increase their rate of pay when they're here on those days to time and a half. That's made a big difference to get those days staffed up properly, so thank you for that. And then just a real quick construction update with respect to bond epic, we're less than two weeks away before they move into that space, I think March 3rd, of which they're very excited for that. We have a little bit later tonight, I'll go through the Heritage Phase Two bid, which was a pretty large package, but I'll kind of walk through that a little bit in a few minutes. And we got a couple other that are coming, but did also wanted to share again, that March 18th, the next board meeting, regular session, we're going to try to schedule a tour ahead of that, probably starting a little earlier. We'll have it kind of organized like we did last time, so hopefully you all are able to make that, but want to make sure you note that, and then we'll send invites out for each of those sessions, so that's all I had, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just want to say thank you to all of the people who are reading snow and nutrition services. I was thinking about that as I was reading this, just being in a restaurant and like everybody's canceling their orders they have, and what do you do with the food? And trying to save that, and I just, it's kind of fascinating to me, and I just appreciate all of the behind-the-scenes work.
I'll pass that along, thank you.
I always learn something when reading your reports. This time I learned what dwell time is. I had to look it up, but like, okay, dwell time is letting the cleaner sit long enough that it actually disinfests.
Makes you feel better. I also learned something.
Steve, sir, with all the snow that we've had, is there communication channels with Liberty and Kansas City if, I don't know, if we see recurring locations that are problems for us being able to get buses through? Is there, is there avenues for you to make those types of communications?
We have, I would say in years past, we had transportation, and our Facilities Director have had some points of contact, a little more informal. City of Liberty has been easy for us for a long time. There has been a little bit of change. Councilman Nathan Willett has proactively kind of reached out to us, and we've been able to kind of pass along some key areas that needed attention, and they've been very responsive, which we let them know how much we appreciate that. So that's a bit of a change, and very welcome change, yeah.
Especially when we had that extension of winter break, if you'll recall that week. They were very responsive and troubleshooting around the Kansas City side of the district, so appreciate Councilman Willett.
And there's.
Other questions of Mr. Anderson? Okay, thank you. Next up is our Human Resources Report with Dr. Sarah Marriott.
I told Dallas to time that right when I.
Is that what you?
You have no questions for me?
But not none of us got to hear it.
Well, thank you. So our February report, we are continuing to work with Kelly Services for substitute staffing, as I previously shared with you guys. We met with them on the 30th of January for our first semester review to receive a status update regarding staffing for the year, which we are very pleased with. So for our classroom teacher fill rate for first semester was at 95%, which is terrific. Wednesdays had our highest fill rates, with Fridays and Mondays, not surprisingly, being the most difficult to fill. And we have had 367 substitutes work in LPS so far this school year, with 144 substitutes hired at first semester. So we thank Kelly Services for their continued partnership in making sure that our classrooms are fully staffed. Our Team Liberty meeting for February was surprisingly canceled for inclement weather, so we have rescheduled that for Thursday, April the 10th, and our next Team Liberty meeting is going to be March 11th, and that's when we'll start those preliminary conversations about salary and benefit, or salary projections, recommendations for fiscal year '26. So that actually gives Ms. Sullivan a little bit more time to have hopefully a little bit more accurate information that she can share with Team Liberty at that, at that date. And then I wanted to share a staffing update with you. So so far this year, for our certificated staff members, we have received 25 retirements and 16 resignations, and we have refilled 13 of those positions, and we're continuing to recruit and hire for those positions. It's a little bit tricky when weather's inclement, we have to move to some virtual formats, which isn't ideal, but we're continuing to move forward with that. And then a bit of, also some good news is that we have hired 229 new classified team members since July 1st of the school year. Right now, we only have 19 vacancies in our classified team, which is tremendous. That's usually, winter's a higher turnover rate, and so thankful to operations and all of our HR team members for working really hard to make sure that we're continuing to recruit and hire for those positions. Take any questions that you have.
So I have a question regarding the Team Liberty calendar. So you had a Team Liberty meeting scheduled for the 3rd of April.
And that is still on the calendar as well.
And so you've added the 10?
Correct, yes.
Got it.
And if for some reason we make all the decisions that we need to make on April 3rd, we'll decide if we need to have that April 10th meeting.
As a backup, right?
As a backup, yeah. But we wanted to make sure that we did have that opportunity available.
I have a question about the Beginning Teacher Assistance Program. So that's for first and second-year teachers with the Innovation and Learning Coaches. How often do they generally get together?
Well, I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Moore on that. Do you mind answering?
Sure. They meet quarterly as a group, so we do some PDs, so they've met with Caravandis and Michael McDowell, and then they do visits to other classrooms, some days where the coach and the new teacher go and they visit other classrooms, so that's more one-on-one. So it's several times throughout both years.
Other questions of Dr. Marriott?
Yay.
Okay.
Staffing.
Good job.
More to come. Next up then is Superintendent's Report, item 4.6, and just a couple of highlights from my update to the board. Shared a little bit around our strategic leadership team, and can't thank that group enough, and that we try to meet every other week. Incliment weather has kind of thrown us off, but they continue to effectuate the strategic plan. And so as we look to conclude this semester, here in just a couple of months, a couple of things that that group will be doing is identifying accomplishments, certainly, things that we've achieved, then also identifying those areas that will then carry forward into the '25, '26 school year. But then also identify anything that we feel needs to be paused or stopped in the event that that's no longer the direction of the district, or perhaps it's outdated, and perhaps we've moved beyond that. So we'll be working over the course of the next couple of months to identify each of those areas, share information with you at our board retreat in June, but then also spend part of our summer working on refreshing that strategic plan as we get back together in the fall for the '25, '26 school year to be able to set that particular year's strategic plan. Likely to see a lot of carryover, but then also perhaps a couple of things that we add within those five areas of our strategic. within those five areas of our strategic plan work. I want to jump out a little bit to the Kansas City region in terms of some work that continues with real world learning. As you know, that's a by-state initiative, both in Missouri and Kansas, that hits on about 100,000 high school students in terms of looking to ensure that every graduate has at least one market value asset or tangible real world learning experience that they can take with them. As that initiative has worked on its strategic plan for the coming future, I wanted to hit on the four areas that that plan involves. The first of which is student-centered learning, elevating student voice, career exploration, personal reflection, goal setting, enhanced plans of study, portfolios, and competency-based work. Capacity building, as far as ensuring that we equip students with an understanding of industry skills and gaps that might exist, partnering with higher education for those students pursuing two-year or four-year degree, and equipping educators to integrate real world learning into their instruction. This is not only relegated for high school, but we've moved beyond that to capture middle school as well as elementary and even early childhood, and what those real world learning experiences might look like at those younger grades. Focusing on the education system or, or school districts through agile frameworks, looking at workforce needs, communicating that post-secondary opportunities in terms of what students can pursue, as well as embedding real world learning in each school district's mission and vision in their strategic plan. The last category then would be developing or designing dynamic ecosystems as far as collaboration with business, schools, community partners, leveraging technology and sharing best practices among those real world learning systems. Want to shift then to another network that we're part of, and that's the Success Ready Students Network. As we've provided information along the way, we're still working towards a mission of an innovative assessment demonstration authority waiver that sits at the federal level. Of course, a question mark is kind of looming over the U.S. Department of Education and what that might entail, so we're watching that pretty closely. But in collaboration with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, just know that that work continues. And if we hit a wall or a change in our approach, we'll certainly share that with the board as we move forward. Legislative session is upon us, and hopefully you're paying attention to reports and updates that you're receiving through the School Boards Association. We do the same with MSBA, but then also a variety of administrative updates that we receive, including the cooperating school districts. So cooperating school district of greater Kansas City has an upcoming advocacy day in Jefferson City on February 26th, I think the evening before. We have a little bit of a time to gather as far as a legislative update, but I know that several from our region will be visiting Jefferson City on February 26th to meet with area legislators. The last thing that I would share, and I appreciate Dallas, I'm not sure if he stepped back in over there, but we just had a message go out. You got notified as far as inclement weather for tomorrow and school being canceled, but he's also been working at setting up our state of the district meetings. Those have been interrupted to some extent with the most recent missed school days, but all total, we have 23 meetings scheduled across the district at every single one of our campuses, all of our operations departments here at this building that consume really the month of February on into March. We're in the process of rescheduling a few of those, but that's a great time to share an update, connect with our faculty and staff, to hear their questions, allow them opportunity to share their concerns, follow up as we need to follow up, but just know that we are in the middle of that process as well. So spring is always a busy time as we try to wrap up a current school year, but then also get ready for the coming school year. So things are moving along. Would certainly entertain any questions that the board may have of me this evening.
Is the real world learning leadership internal?
No. So that is kind of a regional advisory group of superintendents primarily that help kind of inform the team at Kaufman as far as strategic plan priorities, various convenings, and then from that superintendent advisory, you have other leaders at the central office level and then even the building level. So there are a variety of opportunities at each of those levels, all the way down to the classroom level around client-connected projects, so.
And can you please tell us again what, who comprises the strategic leadership team?
So that is every single person on our strategic plan as far as the plan owners. So if you go to the, I think it was intended to be a one-pager, it's now a two-pager, but we have 20-plus plans that are incorporated. And so it primarily includes cabinet leaders, but then also leaders out of innovation and learning, as well as student equity and access, as far as some folks that report to Dr. Dixon Sehorn. That's the majority of folks. You also have a couple of folks from HR, but those are really those plan owners that get together every few weeks to be able to report out on their progress. We tend to, we tend to gather for about a 30, 45-minute quick update every few weeks. So, okay. That concludes our administration reports.
On to unfinished business.
5.1 is a quick amendment to the '25, 2026 epic calendar revision. We thought we had that squared away and then noticed the need to move a professional development day. So the document you have uploaded reflects the appropriate PD day, that being November 7th. So we'll just present that to you this evening for your approval.
I move the board approve. Oops, you know, somebody else did it because I have.
I move the board approve the 2025, 2026 epic calendar as revised.
Has the wrong thing up. Would have been an interesting.
Second.
Yeah, I was like, wait until you do approve that.
Yes.
Jen? Yes. AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
5.2. Under 5.2, our category of board policy updates, you really have three sections here, the first of which is our policies for approval, followed by policies for review that you'll see then in March, and then lastly, a set of administrative procedures, which are just provided to you this evening for awareness. I do want to make mention of one policy that we've looked at over the course of the last several weeks, and that's policy IC-2 regarding the academic calendar. This is in progress. You may recall from years past, hours were the most important piece as far as number of hours in a school day, which districts have to have, schools have to have a minimum of 1,044 hours. If they fall below that, then they have to make up those hours. And then we looked at days. Days are the most important piece as it relates to a school year. So the legislature oftentimes goes back and forth on some of these areas. And so what policy IC-2 reflects is last year's approval of Senate Bill 727. Specifically, introduce a number to you, 169 school calendar days, and that school districts cannot fall below 169 days. This was really intended to ward those four, four-day school districts as far as those districts that have moved toward that. And so there's a bit of a carrot out there. For those districts that exceed 169 days, they get an additional 1% in funding, which equates to, help me out, Ms. Sullivan, $600,000? Around $610,000. So if you look at historically, our school calendar, we sat at 173 days this year. If you drop below that 169, you forego receiving that additional 1%. While that applies for this year, we're preparing the board policy for '25, '26 to have that provision incorporated into our policy language so that it accurately reflects Senate Bill 727. With that said, it turns out both are important, the number of days, but then also the number of hours. So a school district might opt to forego that additional 1% in funding, so long as they remain above the 1,044 hours, they can drop below the 169. Keeping in mind, if you are a district that has approved a four-day school week, you're in a different category. So districts are really kind of all over the place as far as the length of their calendars, the length of their teacher contracts and contract days. So as you hear various announcements as far as school closure postings and so forth, and you wonder how this district is doing things as compared to Liberty Public Schools, just know that really no two districts are alike. And so we continue to navigate that, appreciate Bob Citro's help as it relates to coding and reporting information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but we'll continue to refine our approach as it relates to setting our calendar, but then also navigating inclement weather and closures. So just wanted to draw that out because that's, that's relevant, given the days we've been walking through here of late. So we present that first set of policies for your approval. You'll see the second set there that are listed later on in March. If you have questions around any of those, please don't hesitate to let us know. Our administrative team will be looking at those as well. And then again, lastly, your procedures are just presented to you this evening for awareness.
Move the board approve policy DFI-2 GCBA, IC-2 IGBI, IGCD, IGCD-A, JEA, JED, and JHDF.
Second.
I think you've got all the numbers in correct sequence.
Well, I don't know whether or not. We'll see. Yes.
Jen? Yes. AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we're on to new business.
We do have a couple of items that we wanted to hit on this evening under 6.1, and that's the Heritage Middle School Phase Two remodel bids. We'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
So mentioned this a little earlier, so last year, so we've been bringing any major work to you all, I'm pointing it out of consent. A lot of the work we do just put into consent, but this was a rather large one, as is indicated, it's about $11.5 million. When you total all of the bids up, and this is again for the renovation of the 23-year original building, very significant renovation. I believe I mentioned last go-around that in addition to the bids coming in higher than anticipated, $2 to $3 million over what we had originally estimated, that had to do with just the nature of the work and the nature of the building as we kind of get into final design. The other thing I think that's worth drawing out as well is, as we did some of the scope work, we uncovered a pretty significant foundation issue, and really it was the one time to get after that. And that was about a $1 million and a half dollar add to the budget. And since we're going to be, the only way to do that work is to get into the admin area and really blow that up, it caused us to go ahead and accept that all their alternate, alternate to renovate the administrative space and allow for spreading out of the counseling social worker suite with the admin area. So all that kind of bundled together took us up to about $11.4 million. The letter from New Card Novak makes the recommendation, it's their strong recommendation that we go with the package as presented.
Were you surprised that there were several subcategories where there was only one bidder? Is that the time of the year, or is that not unusual? Or just curious?
Yeah, and we typically kind of get into that when we open the bid. Sometimes it's surprising, sometimes they're in pretty detailed conversations and they're, they're expecting and they're rather surprised when they don't receive the bid. But I think the, everybody's getting ready for summer work, so it's a little bit more competitive right now. So if we maybe had been a month or two ahead, we may have gotten a little extra. But I will say in their kind of, their evaluation, there was nothing out of the ordinary, considering inflation, and again, considering the scope of the project changed as we got into design.
With that change of scope, with the foundation work and things being added, what does that do to the timeline of the work?
It's a great question. We're still unpacking that. The goal is to, it will certainly bleed into the fall. That's with certainty. I think the goal is that we'll have everything wrapped up by the end of this calendar year. That's the target right now. But we'll, we'll see as we get a little bit closer into scheduling work.
What did we anticipate this is going to cost?
I would, what was it, about six, seven?
Okay. And that was without the additional work on the admin side, right? Yeah. Okay.
And as I mentioned last time, we've had some, thus far, we've had some pretty good bid experiences where we came in a little bit under. So we'll update you on that allocation plan that we've been sharing quarterly to kind of show how everything's kind of sorted itself out. We still feel okay about everything.
Move the board approve the HMS Phase Two remodel bids.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen? Yes. AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Contracts and purchases.
We have three items that we wanted to elevate for you this evening. We'll turn that back over to Mr. Anderson.
This is Steve Anderson Show.
Window. This first contract is with Staples. This is somewhat tied a little bit to the transition from the copy centers, we're getting ready for this, this, this spring and beyond. This is with Staples to produce some curriculum for ELA, so that that was item one. And we've been really encouraged by the cost, costs that have come in, coming in through Staples, better than we had projected when we initially made the presentation on the copy center shift. The second one is with SWC of Kansas City, and that's with Technology to schedule the intercom replacements at Ridgeview. This is coordinated with, it's part of capital, coordinated with the work associated with the bond improvements at Ridgeview Phase Two. And then last is with Teachly, and that's for a math intervention license for a piloting program at Merritt Hill. And again, these are all three that we needed to kind of pretty often get together ahead of the meeting, and all were included on Friday night.
Staples lead time on four days. It's in town then, I would assume somewhere?
You know, they, some of it is, but it's all part of this network, so we're not exactly sure where it's coming from, but we feel that responsiveness is.
Yeah.
Right where we need it to be.
That's great.
I move the board approve the emergency contracts and purchases as presented.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Board of Education, legislation, and advocacy.
So we have two advocacy days, one's consolidated school districts of Kansas City and one's MSBA.
Cooperating school districts, yeah.
Yeah.
No, you're good. On again, February 26th.
And then MSBA is March 16 or something?
11.
Ironically, they're, they're receiving online testimony for a House bill related to waiving the requirement for 169 days this year because of the weather. So I don't know if we'll be stuck with 169 now, but it's really going to affect next year, but something to consider going forward.
We had a conversation with local legislators as far as perhaps a fix, particularly on virtual learning, where initially it was five days of virtual learning and then six days of virtual learning that could be coded as far as attendance and so forth, but really kind of advocating for even more of that, more days, just to be able to extend that option. So we'll see if that gains any traction with the legislature as well, so.
I will say, we're still seeing how some of the legislation plays out. I mean, we just approved a bunch of 727 items from last year, but I mean, the 1% bump's going to be subject to appropriation, right, for that 169 days. You know, I think all the groups who are involved with the legislative platforms is to make sure that the funding is there for those items that were passed last legislative session, so I think that's a concern. And we always have the concern that they, they fund those things, but then don't fully fund transportation again. So just to.
Shelby? And the legislative luncheon Lawrence, you have some interesting little information, but if you have questions or additional things, you can go onto MSBA's website. I can never remember which Caitlin is doing the advocacy, because the other one is doing.
Policy.
Yeah. But it was interesting on Friday.
There was so much, like they were talking so fast.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. But there is so much to be talked about. But talking to legislators, I think, is something we probably need to get used to. There are upcoming dates, the MSBA advocacy day that Jen talked about is March 11. The cooperating school districts is February 20.
That's next week.
Yeah, that, oh, my gosh, you can't believe that. Okay. Thank you. House bond, NSBA are listed on there, but I don't think we have anyone going to either one. And then the list of upcoming meetings are tickets to. Any other remarks, comments?
Yeah, I think you'll be surprised, 30 years ago this year is when the Liberty Education Foundation was established. About 30 years. And so in honor of that, on March 1st, if you have not yet gotten your tickets for the the uncorked event, Ninth Annual Big Do-It's up at Jewel.
It's almost sold out.
Nearly sold out.
There's less than 50 tickets left.
And there's a really cute puppy named Copper.
Sounds like we gotta, we gotta take her.
No, he lives with me.
Look at that, that's how it starts.
Funny how that's...
That's how it starts.
No, I'm just making, training him very well for someone.
For your own home. That's fantastic.
Thanks, Jen. No, he's for someone else. He's adorable though. Yeah, great event, very fun.
It will be very fun. Anything else? Move the board adjourn. That works too.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Drive safely home.